Next item.
Special reports, benchmarks, Ms. Hilda Irani.
Good evening, President Thorp, Board Trustees, Superintendent Milakow. My very short presentation this evening will give you an overview of Public Act 144, Section 98B, which is the building benchmark assessment goals. And this is required by Michigan Department of Ed that twice a year in February and in June that we share with you what those goals are and what our plans are moving forward. So per the requirements of the law, building, all of our school buildings are to create academic goals, and with those goals, they have interim targets. Those goals are tied to benchmark assessments. For grades K through eight, we use, we set our goals, and they are set for a January and as well as a June target date. In our high schools, because they do not have a K or a benchmark assessment, we will be using their grade one semester grades. With the goal-setting process, the state will award funds to the district to reimburse us for the cost of the benchmark assessment. So in our case, we use NWA MAP, and so we will be reimbursed for the cost of that as part of the trade-off of administering this. With the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, otherwise known as MYKIP, which is our school improvement or continuous improvement plan, our district academic goal of increasing student achievement expects buildings to have an interim and end target, which in turn satisfies the requirements of this law. So it's nice that everything fits under that MYKIP umbrella. So not only are we meeting the needs that we feel are appropriate for our district and for our building and our students, of course, we are also fulfilling parts of this. All right, so what is our progress so far towards the goal? Let me give you a quick summary where we're at. Each of our buildings set an interim goal for both math and reading. This, the data was disaggregated by subgroup, and all of this has been posted on our district website under the transparency reporting page for all, for everyone to view. Back in the fall, we met with building leadership teams to establish these goals and to set a stretch goal. For kindergarten through eighth grade, these goals are based on the fall NWA in both reading and in math. And for our high school students, we use the semester one grades, as I mentioned earlier. During the June board meeting, I will be back again to give you an update and to show where we're at in terms of these goals. To give you a little brief overview of where we're at so far in terms of reaching our goals, you have here in front of us our high school grades for the last few years. Here you have on the last column there, you can see for January 2023, for grades nine through 12, overall, the percentage of students passing their classes is in line with previous years at 94%. And I would consider, given every, I would look at this really as our baseline year, given where we were, you know, pre-pandemic, we're right back to 2019, we're very close to that. You'll see in 2020 there, that second semester at Orange Bar there, that would have been the year where we were, of course, we've gone virtual, and as a district, we felt that we would be more lenient in terms of our grading system, and so hence, there were no failing grades. And then the year after, 2021, of course, that was when we were virtual, and then we came back hybrid. So grading there was a little bit of, you know, took some adjustment. But going forward, I feel like we have a solid base, and we can only go up from there. In June, I will share growth data for NWA to give you a fall to spring comparison for our kindergarten through eighth grade. Finally, I want to talk briefly about assessment accountability. So we know that testing seizing is upon us with WIDA testing going on right now. Soon, we will have MME, which would involve SAT, PSAT, ACT work keys, and then we'll transition into MSTEP. The district does not have the option to eliminate any of these assessments, as much as everyone feels like, you know, it's, it's not. We are following federal and state guidelines, and this is part of, you know, doing, us doing what we need to do. I know that we feel, a few years back, we were able to reduce the amount of testing that we did, but everything that we offer now and we administer in our schools are per MDE and federal guidelines. And finally, we recognize that we have, you know, we've had some questions about this, so I felt the need to bring this up. While MDE and the district supports parents in making choices for their children, there is no acceptable way under state or federal law to opt out of state assessments. So in 2021, during the post-pandemic there, the requirements of that 95% participation rate was waived by the U.S. Department of Education, but after 2022 and going forward, we're back at that 95% rate. So at our building levels, at the district level, we need to have 95% of our students taking those appropriate assessments per their grade level. Do I have any questions that I could answer for you?
Trustee Barry.
Thank you for that report.
Of course.
If we can go back to that chart with the, with the goals. I'm struggling trying to read it here.
I know, I apologize. It's, it's posted on our district website.
Yes, no, thank you.
It's been there right after, so you can zoom in, I know, and I, my eyes can't handle it either.
I'm looking at a particular building here.
Sure.
So that goal of 70, 75% or different categories in reading, I'm concentrating on reading here, what does that mean?
So building administrators and their leadership teams looked at the historical data in NWA and set a stretch goal, so based on where they felt their students were at, and then they added to that as what they would hope to achieve, if not higher, by the end of the school year. And they set an interim target, so what they hope to be at for January or for February, and then by the end of the year.
Okay. You and I and a couple other administrators met just last week on something similar.
Yes.
We ran out of time. I wanted to get into, dig deep into it.
Sure.
Hopefully, you know, from the professionals like yourself, but other things were going on in that meeting, and I didn't get a chance. So when I, and thank you for all the information.
Of course.
So when I was doing my own work, looking at, you know, my school data, and I'm looking at the reading, I'm concentrating on third grade here.
Okay.
For obvious reasons.
Of course.
We're about a third grade, we know our current governor is deciding to go, what direction she wants to go, but looking at the numbers of those buildings, is, is, is these numbers right here, like, these goals right here, are they attainable? I mean, when was the last time we seen this kind of numbers that you were presenting us in this report?
Well, like I said, they're looking at their historical data. So are they attainable? Yes, I feel like high expectations is always something that we should have for our students, for ourselves. I don't think we should ever settle.
Yes.
And so I think with solid instruction, with consistency and alignment of our resources and our curriculum, I think we can get there. I, you know, I know our teachers can do it, I have every faith in them.
Well, I have no doubt our teachers can do it, but at the same time, you're saying you're looking at data, so just explain to me one time, maybe I'm a little slow tonight.
No, you're fine.
So the numbers I'm looking at right here that are on the state website. Okay? And I don't want to mention buildings, but the same building that I'm looking at over here. Let's concentrate on all reading, not the breakdowns.
So the grade levels that you're, the scores you're looking at here are based on their NWA scores.
Okay.
What you would see on the parent dashboard on my school data would be based on MSTEP.
Okay.
So it's a different assessment. This would be current students, what's on the parent dashboard would be last year's students.
Okay, but this information is also out there, too.
It is, this is on our district website, correct?
This is on our district website. What I'm saying is what I saw on the state website is also out there for.
It is, it is, but it's, yes, it is last year's assessments, correct?
Yeah, little parents looking to move into the districts or moving out of districts.
Correct.
They're looking at the same information.
You're right.
So I guess, how do you? How do I get some buy-in that maybe we shouldn't be paying attention to these scores? Pay attention here? What is the difference?
I mean, there is alignment between the two, just know in terms of one was from last year, one is from this year, so that does make a difference in terms, and it's a different assessment. MSTEP is measuring our Common Core state standards, NWA does as well, but it's really what's happening with that ongoing group, and I feel like it's, you're not saying, Fathni, do you want to add on to what I'm saying?
Please, yes.
Please do.
Like Hilda said, MSTEP measures performance against grade level essentials.
Okay.
Or grade level Common Core. And we know that many students are below grade level, that's why MSTEP scores tend to be lower than NWA. NWA is a norm reference test, which means they compare students' performance amongst the peers who took the test that year. So they, it, it's measured using the normal curve, so that you're going to always have 50% of students above the normal curve and 50% below. So their performance and NWA, the numbers tend to be higher, but, but that doesn't mean they are performing at that level in terms of proficiency. It's a growth test, it's a norm reference test. So it's harder to achieve the same numbers on MSTEP, because they're using grade level assessments regardless of where the kid is coming from, regardless whether they are EL students, English language students, special ed, or proficient students, they're all tested against grade level. NWA is not. It adapts to, to the students' level, it goes down to the students' level, and the first time the students fails three questions, then it stops at that level, if that makes sense.
Ms. Irani, just by all means, this has nothing to do with.
No, no, I'm pleased with you asking these questions.
I want to get back, I want to get back to the good old days when we're asking, you know, you just mentioned the graduation rates at 94%. That started a long, that discussion started a long time ago. We won't get into the history of that. But I want to get back to that kind of work, so the more I understand here, the better questions I can ask.
Of course.
And maybe if we need to be doing something. So when you tell me that MSTEP is just another assessment, so I'll put all this aside here, and I'll just take two elementaries, two elementary schools, one in Dearborn and one in a nearby district. And I'm looking at here. That 76% of our students are third graders in this elementary in Dearborn are not proficient or partially.
In MSTEP from last year, these are third graders from last year?
These, I want, I want, I want pre-COVID.
Okay.
Because I don't want to hear anything about.
I agree with you. You went back to 2019.
Even though there's like so many articles by our state superintendent saying state scores have improved for the majority of the school districts, okay? So this is an elementary, that's our responsibility, and 76% are re, you know, their scores are like non-proficient or just partially, just, just, just barely got over the hurdle. Where my own sister, my own sister was sad to see her leave Dearborn, but in a nearby district, I'm looking at the third graders, by the way, 76 non-proficient or partially proficient, and we were given a grade of a C. That's a very generous grade. So an elementary school, there are graders, there's relatives that live in this district, there's the same thing in this district, and things get flipped around. Only 31% are not proficient or partially proficient. And that, that's, that this, that, that, that building got a grade of an A.
So there's some word of caution.
Yes.
When we're comparing between districts.
Please, thank you.
We need to know the makeup of the classroom. How many EL students? How many special education students? Class size, are you looking at a grade level of 100 students? Are you looking at a grade level of only 60 students? So I mean, all of those are factors that come into play. Are these students, how long have they been in the country? Remember, students are exempt only for one year, and then they're expected to take those same assessments as their counterparts.
I deliberately said their relatives in the two districts. So probably, you know, the kids that we're looking at mostly were born here.
Okay.
I'm not going back 10, 12 years ago where people are telling me, you know, immigrants coming from Syria or Palestine or whatever. Now I'm going to want to go back to the days where telling me, when people were telling me. Again, I am so looking forward to this conversation, I'm going to get an education here, I'm probably going to get some college credit for it, from you.
And also the recovery.
What's that?
And also the recovery. How do we recover from, from these scores and accelerate student learning to reach proficiency?
Boom, there it is, that's what I'm looking for. So just a little bit of history.
Of course.
Back when I started asking questions about the graduation rates, it was only a couple of our colleagues that were, you know, here, and people were looking at me like, what the heck's he talking about? Then we got to the point where, how do we improve the graduation rates? And here we are right now, we're bragging about a board and a superintendent that did this kind of work, you know, 10, 11 years ago. I'm not looking to say, Dearborn, you know, you know where I'm at in Dearborn.
Of course.
How do we, how we hold ourselves accountable to these goals that you're putting up? I am so looking forward to that. How do we recover from this? During our discussion last week, I mentioned a few other districts.
Right.
When I started comparing, it gave me, I've never, now I know, now I know when, you know, ladies in my life say I got a migraine, I was like heading there. I backed off on that, I said, I'm just going to concentrate on our own, on our own babies.
That's what you got to do.
Yes.
What can we do to move our students forward?
Yes, that's what I'm looking forward, I do want to continue this discussion if it's here or across the hall.
Of course.
Or some serious conversations having, so thank you very much, Ms. Irani.
I just wanted to add also, we're focusing on acceleration, recovery in terms of growth to reach, reach proficiency. So making growth is not enough, but also the communications with principals is, and actually, we had a session today with the principals, is growth toward proficiency. And that's why when you look at the accountability system in Michigan, they gave different weights to different components, and the growth component, they gave it the highest, which is 34%. For proficiency, they gave 29%. It's, it's much harder to reach proficiency, but it is expected to make growth within three years toward proficiency.
Yes, thank you, and, and I want to go back just a little bit. In 2016, the Michigan Legislature passed a law that requires schools, obviously, get third graders to read by third grade level before you move them on, okay? In 2018, 2019 school year, we recognized probably about 30 students that we should hold back, but we decided to go a different direction, we found waivers for them. I'll have some questions for the superintendent under request for information on that.
Sure.
But if kids can't read, I don't have, I'm preaching to the choir, dot, dot, dot. So if I'm a third grader, and I'm not reading at third grade level, later on, if I'm still behind, and I, and I understand the stigma about holding a student back, I fully get it, but what about that stigma when a third grader can't read at a third grade level, and by the time he or she gets into the sixth and seventh grade, and they're even falling further behind, and they start looking around and they're just thinking, what's wrong with me? Then they become the behavior children.
Sure.
Then when they get to high school, we don't have a couple hours to talk about what happens there, so we need to get it, we need to get it right, and I, the magic word you said, how do we get there? So I'm looking forward to some serious, you know, discussion, how do we get there? Thank you very much, sorry for taking up so much time, President Thorp.
Trustee Petlicov.
Well, I'm going to kind of piggyback on Trustee Barry's question, because I also was looking at this chart and wondering, these are stretch goals, they're not, they're not test scores, they're not reflective of, it's what the hope is.
Where we aspire to be.
For.
Exactly.
What's the consequence for buildings that don't even come close to reaching that stretch goal?
Is there any consequence, really?
I mean, is there?
In the all reality?
If we're, if we're required to provide this to the state in order to get funding, is there a consequence? I mean, we can pick any number out of the sky and say we want to get, but in reality, all it is, is providing a number. What do we do with it?
Actually, the consequence is in the form of revisiting their school improvement plans and realigning their practices to make sure that they're providing targeted intervention to students who are not meeting those goals. There's no consequence from the top down, from MDE to the district, but what we do is we meet with the principals, the executive directors. Hilda, she's doing a great job filling in big shoes when Dan Patterson left, but again, there are frequent meetings with the principal, and we mentioned MYKIP earlier, Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process, this is something new. Instead of writing long reports and submitting to the state, what we've been doing is we're implementing it at the district level between the three feeders in all of the schools and systemizing the practices, again, to move away from intervention into acceleration. How do we teach using grade level essentials and challenge the students with stretched, stretched strategies to reach a grade level instead of providing intervention resources that are below grade level? So this has been a very heavy focus this year with the teachers and with the principals.
So all the executive directors, I'm assuming, are, are gathering this data as it comes in.
Yeah, we did this across.
And then assessing what, where, where the issues need to be focused at which buildings.
Right.
Correct?
And, and we're tying these to the principal's goals and the teacher's goals as well.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you for bringing that up, Trustee Petlicov, consequences. I'm not too concerned with the consequences from the federal government or the state, you know, we need to hold each other accountable here. We have some of the greatest teachers working in our district. I know it can be done. I guess I, we need some honest discussion, what do we need to do to support those teachers in the classroom? And I know it all comes down to funding, what have you, but we're in the business of educating our future, and if we're not concentrating on our second and third graders, that's just going to set us up later on for a different kind of work, okay? In our city, which most people live in, in our community, we, we're dealing with some issues right now, mental health.
True.
You know, reckless driving, you know, I can keep going on and on, and, and I can, I can, I can share with you a question that I asked Jack Riley about six, seven years ago, said, I said, Jack, well, I can say that to him, but Mr. Mayor, the last three, the last three people that committed suicide in the city, do you know their names? He said, no, I don't. I said, you know why? Because they're not involved, we're losing those kids. Those are the kids that, yes, by the time they get to the seventh and eighth grade, they're looking around like, they start feeling like there's truly something wrong with them, we failed those children, we, the district, nobody here, nobody up here. By the time they get into high school, we know what happens there, suspend, suspend, suspend. Then later on, when they get in our community, who's paying the price? The community, so we all care about this community, we want must interest, so maybe instead of looking at it as consequences, you know, let's figure out, let's hear from our true soldiers out there, the teachers, say, what do you need to get these students to the next level? Thank you.
Trustee Watts.
Can you speak to those students that are, that are identified as perhaps needing additional support for reading? Do we have additional resource teachers who are specific to the classroom or to the building that help with that?
So depending on the need, whether you're speaking to special needs or just below grade level, we have several positions at every building from instructional coaches, you have your early childhood specialists, you have, let me see, your English Language Developmental Specialists, your ELDs, who am I missing? Title I staff, so every building, I think we are blessed in this district with resources, and so it's just a matter of identifying what those needs are and providing the alignment of our staff and what we need to adjust that. I think we have what it takes, like I said, our teachers are amazing, I know that, I've worked with them for many years, I love what, I know what we can do, it's just, we've got a couple curveballs that came to us, one being COVID, and then the hybrid, and then all of that, so playing that catch-up, but then like Fathni mentioned, that acceleration to get us back to where we need to be.
And also systems, we have to, to provide acceleration using systems across the board.
Thank you.
You had mentioned the ability to get refunded by the state for the NWA, but I know that we're piloting in some buildings, i-ready.
Correct.
Does it work the same way that we?
Exactly the same way, and it's, it's another assessment that, that the state would, per this law would cover. So if we did decide to change directions next year based on the assessment committee and our administration and our parent and student feedback, then that would be.
And currently with the NWA, where you, we've switched it from three times a year down to two times a year now, correct?
Correct, yeah, we do a fall, we do fall, we do spring, in the winter, we do kindergarten through third grade, just reading, and that is per the read by third grade law that we have to do that.
All right. Trustee Moses.
Question on the opt-out. You said there is no acceptable way under state or federal law to allow an opt-out, but parents have done that in the past where they've.
They, they have refused, and that's how, I mean, that's really, it's a refusal.
And that brings the participation rate down, which the minimum threshold for the participation rate is 95. If it goes below 95, and the question was asked earlier, what was the consequence? There would be a consequence for the district if we have less than 95% participation.
Is that 95% at a district level? Do they look at a building level?
Both. Building by building and subgroup by subgroup, like EL students need to have 95, special ed students 95, and all of the subgroups.
It is building by building, because then it plays into a pound with school index and school grades, and then it affects the district as well.
Just for a comment. Ms. Irani, I'm so looking forward to the discussion, I said it a couple times already.
Of course.
I'm also looking forward to these reports four, five years from now. You have some great, great mentors.
I hope so, me too.
And you're going to do an amazing job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next, citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action or assigned in by 7:10 p.m. by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible, there's a three-minute limit on comments made to the board. Thomas Bieseck would like to come to speak to the board about thoughts of the last few board meetings.
While he is on his way up, I want to make sure everyone knows that there are also comment cards written in Arabic if anyone needs one. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, good evening, everyone. Looking back on the last few board meetings, as a student watching, there's just a lot of negativity and criticism directed at the board, the district, so I just kind of want to balance that with some positivity. With that being said, I want to thank you guys for staying strong up there. I know it's kind of hard with all that criticism being directed towards you, to stay up there very stoic, keep your cool, so I commend you guys for that. And I would also like to thank the librarians who have been going through that tedious book review process, that must be hard for them, I know. At Dearborn High, they've been working hard to go through the books, any of them that have been flagged for any potential reasons, so I also want to commend them for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, I'm sorry, next card.
Is Fazal M. Al-Khali. Would like to speak to the board in behalf of its behavior and collaboration.
I don't see Faz in here right now, so come back in case he just stepped out for a moment.
The next one is Kathy Martin from Dearborn Heights. She would like to speak to the board about bullions and racism.
Good evening. I have spoken before you before as an employee and as a concerned citizen, and I was really hoping that I could come and talk to you today as the newly-elected union president, but I have to talk to you as a mother. My daughter, my children have attended Dearborn schools since kindergarten, and being biracial, they have had to deal with things that other people have not had to deal with. I've tried to use the proper channels to address this. My son is now in ninth grade, he no longer attends Dearborn schools, but my daughter does. And again, this year, things have arisen, and I've tried to use the proper channels, and she has to report it, and she does, and I decided that I was going to let it lie until, you know, see what happened. However, Friday, she gets in the car and says, Mama, they're doing it again. My daughter is being called the N-word, my daughter has been told to get back on the bus, and on Friday, they were like, hey, have you solved that bus problem yet? And it's just, it's too much. She goes to school to learn not to be bullied, and I haven't seen any changes. And it's, I, and then I have to tell her, oh, go report it. So not only is she having to deal with this, she has to relive her trauma by going and reporting it, and it's not always handled in a very us-appropriate way. And I don't know what can be done to stop this, but I just need it to stop. I, I, I can't have my daughter coming home hearing these things being said about her. I, I, I can't have my daughter coming home hearing these things, being said about her. So, I know the district is doing, you know, DEI and all these things, it's not happening fast enough. Something needs to be done. And it's not just my daughter, I have reached out to other parents. Parents have been reaching out to me for a couple of years, and unfortunately, they don't want to speak. And I've tried to hold back on speaking, but I can't anymore. So I'm not just speaking about my daughter, I'm speaking about other students of color, or, you know, black students in the district. So, it's a problem at a lot of the schools, and please, 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 do something to make it stop.
Thank you. You don't want to speak? All right.
Okay. Next, Lali Ali would like to come to speak to the board about community projects from Dearborn.
Hello, good, good evening, trustees. My name is Lali, Dearborn resident, byproduct of Dearborn Public Schools, as well as having four children in the district, two of which at Salina Elementary. So there's a few things that I'd like to discuss, but I am limited on time, so I'll try to go over them very quickly. One regarding the fielding town halls that happened. I attended the Fortson one, President Thorpe, you were there. There was only five community members, most of them were administrators and fielding employees, so very few people showed up. And honestly, as someone who was part of the VIP infrastructure team, as well as the focus group, I was really hoping, at least at the town hall, that there would be some type of plan presented, and it seems after so long, several months, that they keep soliciting feedback with no real fruits to that investigation or research. So I'm hoping that the board will try to get information from them, tangible information that shows what their plans are after all these research that they've done. I want to shift, oh, in addition to during that session, what we, I also learned that there was October 2022 capital investments, there was about ninety-nine point five million dollars spent, and the inequities of that distribution of funds is just very apparent. About sixty percent went into West Side schools, and only nine percent went to East Side schools, including the South End. Only twenty-five thousand dollars of capital investment went to Salina School in itself. So the inequities, we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, really want to focus on the equity portion and making sure that schools, marginalized schools, get the appropriated funds needed to fix their infrastructure as well. And then lastly, I want to talk about a community project that I introduced to the Salina District. On December twentieth of last year, I, me and a colleague of mine from the Ecology Center, went and visited Salina Elementary in hopes that we could use the school yard to collect rainwater for a research that we're doing, to understand the PFAS contaminants in air or on land. And what started as a conversation with the principal, really just intrigued by the opportunity to have this done, led to a formal request to the district to allow us to collect rainwater, simply putting a bucket on the school yard to collect rainwater. That was back in December. It took up until January thirtieth to get a response, and the response unfortunately was a rejection, and allowing us to put an empty bucket on a school yard, literally just to collect rainwater. Throughout that time, I have yet to understand the reasons why, they haven't explained to me why they won't allow us to put an empty bucket on a school yard. I, I know we got a few seconds, but I hope that you guys can look into the reasons why and allow us in submitting that information, allowing to do the research. So, I don't know if I can elaborate a bit more, but?
Time's up, but I've got it written down, and, and we'll talk about it when we're done.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Jackson Wagner from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about book bans.
So, this month is Black History Month. Schools all over the country weave lessons about Black history into each school day throughout the month. Unfortunately for AP African-American Studies students in high schools, this year's Black History Month has been marred by the threat of censorship by Florida's governor, Ron DeSantis, and when he threatened, you know, the college board removed content from their AP African-American Studies course, you know, content from multiple authors, particularly because DeSantis had targeted them, you know, LGBT content. When DeSantis was in Congress, he wrote a bill to ban Muslims from entering the US. That bill was the template for Trump's Muslim ban. As governor, DeSantis went after LGBT content, then when he went after, he went after African-American content. And in the meantime, his lackeys started a group called Moms for Liberty. Moms for Liberty pushed book bans all over the country, and Dearborn's book banners got their book list from that group. They didn't come up with the list by themselves. They admitted, when they were interviewed by Vice News, that they only read snippets, they didn't even read the books. That's what this board is so afraid of. You know, do you want the fascist governor of Florida and his cronies to decide whether or not students in Dearborn get to enjoy their constitutional rights? You know, look up Island Trees School District v PICO, where the Supreme Court decided that students in high school have a right to receive speech, and that it is unconstitutional for school boards to ban books. You know, they can't even be bothered to read the books that they want to ban, and you let them intimidate you into banning some books? Is this board content with only ever being remembered for their cowardice? You know, I have ancestors who fought in the US Civil War. They fought and died to end slavery in this country. They fought for a future where everyone could enjoy freedom of speech. They fought against southern states like Florida, which denied humanity to anyone who wasn't an adult, Christian, white man. This country ended slavery and ended Jim Crow, but the struggle for equality and justice is far from over. And if those of us in Dearborn can't unite against men like DeSantis, who want to destroy us all, then none of us will be safe. Dearborn deserves better than this. Let's confront Dearborn's racist history and recognize that diversity is our greatest strength.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Adit Mosip would like to come to speak to the board about equity in DPS from Dearborn.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. So, today we heard from the superintendent, the commitments to diversity, equity, and inclusion from the district. I want to put two examples and ask, where is equity in these two examples? First example is investments in infrastructure. As one of the speaker mentioned, we went to Fortson, listened to this exercise that you're investing hundreds of thousands of dollars in, that's going to be worthless at the end, because the community is not trusting you with the money, there would not be a bond, so I'm not sure where you're investing money. When there is money to be invested, you did not listen to the community, you did not solicit any feedback, you just went and invested. You just put a hundred million dollars into the buildings. So I'm going to pass this, this is from your website, and I ask you to look what these schools located at, east versus west, and see where the money went into. Because when I looked at it, I was stunned to realize where the money went in. Try to figure out the reasons that, what listed on the website, try to understand those reasons. Did they just funded elementary schools? Because that could be a vision of, just to make sure air-conditioned schools with elementary schools, where there are two schools in the east end. McDonald's received twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, sorry, Mabel's, received twenty-four thousands only out of this ten-hundred million dollar, and McDonald's received zero. An elementary school receiving zero, while other elementary schools receiving six and seven million dollars. Salina is listed, Salina Intermediate is listed as fully air-conditioned, which is not the case. I hope you can go back and ask the questions. The other inequality that I would like to raise and ask the board, that's something that we have raised for years, is the participation of students in after-school programs, especially at, at Selford High School. Go walk during the day in the school, and go walk during the afternoon, and see who participated in the school after schools. Many Arab-American students, majority of them do not participate in after-school programs. Most of them get bused to the school, and they don't enjoy the after-school programs. When we ask many questions, and we raise these issues many times to administrators, I leave you to ask, because if you think about transportation, it's not the issue because there's buses that leaves after school, if you think the students don't want to participate because that would be the claim that you would get, couple of you were at Salina celebrating the champions volleyball team that went, and it's not the first team that wins champions in Salina. There are many champions from that school, but they don't get the opportunity. The one that tried to get the opportunity, they get benched throughout the season, just like the football player that got into the team. So, I hope you, you live up to your, to your promises about equity and diversity.
Thank you.
Next, Samara Lookman would like to come to speak to the board about several issues from Dearborn.
Dr. Maliko indicated that DPS leads the way in diversity, equity, inclusion, several muhtimes it was mentioned, that agenda mentioned expressions of concerns for those in the Middle East, but you fail to show concern or commitment to diversity, equity, or inclusion to that same group of people within your Board of Education. I'm not going to remain respectful to those of you who have disrespected an entire community. Yes, you've disrespected an entire class of people that serve as the majority of DPS parents, twenty thousand students. So to have Malibu Barbie, the wicked witch of the West, and a guy who's at board meetings as naptime, conspire with the former board president, to use Mr. Thorpe, who I have high regard and respect for, you used him. You threw him under the bus so that you can send a message to Mr. Mosip that you reign supreme, that he needs to bow down to your majority. Let's cut the BS out for now. You have never raised the concerns you raised to any other candidate for board president in recent history, ever. So forgive me if I call a spade a spade and tell you that your actions are apparently and inherently and blatantly racist. This is what we talk about when we say systemic racism. You guys don't even realize that you're doing it when you're doing it, and you don't realize when you're allocating budgets in the millions towards, exclusively towards one side of town, how is racist? And the bottom line is that what you did was shameful and disgusting. I'm disgusted by your actions, absolutely disgusted. We tell our kids to be kind, to get along, we tell our school personnel to set an example for our children. Explain to me the example you're choosing to set when you interrupt each other incessantly, when you're bullying each other, when you're constantly correcting the pronunciation of someone who speaks like more parents in this district than you do, or when you disrespect one another in front of each other's children. How dare you put your personal feelings above the greater good? How dare you allow your ego to lead? How dare you create the divisiveness and image of exclusion when you are supposed to be leading in diversity and inclusion? How dare you purport to be a leader or a representative of the people when you've allowed your personal grievances to lead? How are you supposed to address the racism that this poor mother complained to you about, when some of you on the highest level don't even realize that you're doing it yourselves? Shame on you. You should be ashamed of yourselves and your actions. I'm embarrassed for you. Keep your beef out of my school district, out of my child's school district. Do better for crying out loud, grow up.
Thank you.
So, two additional blue cards came through, but it was after the time, so I will write, I will read their comments. America Yaya would like, she did not want to, well, this is her paper. I am writing in support and solidarity with Doc, with Mr. Otto Mosip in regards to what occurred in the organizational meeting earlier this year. It was not only wrong and disrespectful to him, but to the entire Middle Eastern community, the same Arab-American community that has been wronged, insulted, and banned from opportunities within the district for decades. As a board, you all need to admit the fault that was committed against Otto. He was stripped of his presidency, and it is a slap in the face to the entire community. Let's not forget all of the efforts and impacts the Middle Eastern community has had on Dearborn and the school district. It is Otto's turn for presidency, and the blatant racism of this board is evident. The current president must step down, and Otto should be leading at this time. And then the last one was from Ms. Mona Murray. She said, I do not wish to speak to the board, but would like to make the following comment. I'm disappointed in the board's actions in one of their previous meetings Otto Mosip should have, should have and should be president right now.
Thank you.